Board Education meeting for July 20, 2015. For Mr. Peter Carter-Wolff. Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mrs. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mrs. Costeck.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Wirthmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Please stand for the pleasure of the meeting.
(coughs) My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion for approval of minutes for executive session is June 15, 2015, and July 1, 2015.
So moved.
I think we've covered that already. We don't have to.
The minutes you're dealing with now are the minutes of the board's board meeting.
All right. Then, any announcements?
Mr. Ross, you do need to approve the minutes of the regular session.
It's down further.
Oh, it's down further?
Yeah, it's down further.
Sorry. Right, I'm up there.
Okay, seeing none. District presentations. Summer school update.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and Dr. Karat. I'm Maureen Langhoff.
How's this going?
I'm the Director of Special Education. I oversaw the extended school year program this summer for students with disabilities. The extended school year program is based off of students' IEPs, so students who are identified as needing extended service through the summer by their IEP team are served. We served students at Thomas Jefferson this summer. We've classically held ESY at Jamison, but we're renovating Jamison, so we are at Thomas Jefferson. We served approximately 95 students between June 8 and July 16. It was a Monday through Thursday program. Students worked on academic and social skills, focusing on their IEP goals. Related services such as speech, OT, which is occupational therapy, and physical therapy were also provided. Students received breakfast and lunch each day. Instruction was hands-on. They frequently used technology. We brought technology from other district buildings, iPad carts and laptop carts from Woodruff so that the students could be engaged with technology. There were interactive smart board activities, utilized compass learning, reading mastery, corrective reading, and math connections, which was a highlighted math program. Prior to instruction beginning, the students were assessed and again at midterm and at the end of the program. Teachers and administrators worked in collaboration with families prior to the first day of ESY and throughout the program. And parents were encouraged to take advantage of the open door policy at ESY and visit their child's classroom. Most students made measurable progress on their goals. The things used were work samples, assessment results, and other information related to each child's individual goals. And the information collected this summer will be given to next school year's teachers so that they have an idea of what the students accomplished this summer. I think a few things that made the summer so successful was that we actually started planning this in the fall. So we had food service and transportation onboard, as well as the special education coordinators. So we met monthly to make sure we were on track with everything that needed to be done. The coordinators were present within the first few days of the program, so all the little issues that we came across regarding transportation or students' programming needs, we got resolved very quickly. So overall, it went really well. We probably will hold the program again next summer at Jamison, but we'll make that decision in the coming year. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions on the summer's good luck?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have a budget update. Presentation on the budget.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Is this on?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to, again, talk about fiscal year 2016 budget development. Mike and I are pleased to be here tonight. The good news is next time we are before you, we will actually be presenting a real 2016 budget. On today's agenda, we've got four things we'd like to talk to you about briefly. Again, just review the budget process to date. We're going to present some out-year financial projections based on some historical expenditure trends and what we know about 2016 revenue. Excuse me, continue the discussion of expenditure reductions and put some items on the table for the board regarding some potential revenue enhancements. Just to recap, again, in November, we really began our internal budget discussions. In March, we had our first discussion with the board on 2016 budget and potential budget reduction options. In April, the board discussed those budget reduction options. And in May, we had another discussion. We presented the 15 amended budget, but also talked again about potential 2016 budget reductions. At this meeting, we are going to, we planned on providing an update on revenues. Unfortunately, we're not getting great information from the State Board of Education on their allocation of revenues for the next year. But we will continue our discussion on budget reductions. And for next steps, in August, again, we will present our proposed 2016 budget. In September, we plan on adopting the budget for 2016. And we will begin fiscal year 2017 budget planning in October. I think one thing we've learned from the process this year is even though we started much earlier this year than has been done in the past, we really need to be finalizing budget decisions in a March timeframe to make our personnel decisions in a more timely manner. Just to recap, our amended 2015 budget, the two funds that we're focusing on are Education Fund and Operation and Maintenance Fund. Our beginning balance going into '15 in the Education Fund was a positive $4.4 million. We spent basically more than, or $10,000, $10,300,000 more in our Education Fund than we brought in, and we ended the year with a deficit of $5.9 million. So that's just a reminder for the next discussions we're going to talk about.
All right, this is the out-year projections that he talked about. What we did was they took the fiscal year '15 budget and looked at the past several years and what we know about salaries and benefits and various things. And so in the bottom, you'll see the assumptions. In this analysis, the property tax, we're assuming will increase 1% per year. What we've heard so far out of the state is that general state aid will be 92% prorated in fiscal year '16, so that's what's in this, and then a 1% increase annually after that. Salaries, we've budgeted to increase 1% per year, which is what they have done over the last several years, and benefits, 2.1% per year. With attrition and raises, that's why these numbers have come out the way they are. And this is assuming that we reduce the $6.5 million this year, but to get it balanced in fiscal year '17, we will have to reduce another $3.7 million in fiscal year '17, and $600,000 in '18 and '19, $500,000. So to keep it balanced after that, we will still have to be very careful with our expenses going forward. And that will not be eating into the accumulated deficit, the bottom number there, if we, obviously if we just get it to a balanced budget. So, same thing in, did I switch? No, okay. This is the same kind of analysis in the O&M fund, same 1% per year, property taxes, 1% on salaries. But to get this fund balanced by fiscal year '18, we would have to continue to cut $650,000 out of that fund in expenses every year to get this fund to where we would need.
Just a question. That's property tax receipts, not property tax rates.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's assuming the EAV goes up 1% every year, and then the rates would stay the same. Transportation, we do have a fund balance in that fund, so we haven't been focusing as much on that, but to get it balanced, we would have to cut expenses out of that fund. And then this is the total operating funds, so it's the four Education Funds, O&M, Transportation, and IMRF, Social Security Funds. So the deficit this last year was $13 million is what we had budgeted, and with the cuts that we were talking about making, the deficit will be $4.5 million approximately for fiscal year '16. And then if we continue to do the cuts that we're talking about doing, we'll hopefully get that closer in fiscal year '17. But this is a multi-year process that we're under if we want to get it back to a balanced budget. Again, we've talked about some budget reduction options with the board, starting in May, and the board discussed these, the initial recommendations in April. What we heard was a board, I'll say consensus, on a lot of these reductions, but particularly in April, we started having some discussions on individual items. So we will talk about those next. We've also received additional input from the board, principal staff, union representatives, and so on, and a lot of those we will start looking at when we start our fiscal year '17 budget development. These are some of the changes, these are the changes we wanted to talk from the May board presentation. So these are ones that the board has expressed some interest in, and we've made adjustments now to these reductions to address board concerns. First one, IB test fees. We now have included the $40,000 in the budget for the district to continue to pay the IB testing fees. Class size reduction, we increased class size to 25, we've reduced that down to 20, I'm sorry, 27 to 25, and resulted in four additional teachers at about an estimated cost of $169,000. The stipends at Woodruff and Treewind, again, this is one of those budget decisions that was made really too late, to be fair to the teachers that are at those schools that made decisions based on the stipends, so those are back in at $185,000. Training stipends at Woodruff and Treewind, Woodruff, they are going to fund 10 hours of those with grant funds, and they will be eliminated at Treewind. We've talked about interest in ELITE. We will fund one school with ELITE, and there's a proposal tonight to allow ELITE to raise external funds with the district to support additional ELITE programming. Extended class period at Franklin Northmore and Rolling Acres, again, this was one of those decisions that was a good budget decision, but again, the decision was made too late in the year, not only to be fair to the teachers at those schools, but for other things like bus scheduling, so that will be put off for another year. Reduce family corps, we've increased family corps. There was a cut of 50%, it's now 20%. And we've eliminated two additional administrative positions, labor relations specialist and professional development coordinator, and the sum of those two is about $164,000. These are tables that you've seen in the past. I think I'm going to skip over these, considering the time. These are very similar to what you've seen in previous presentations. The only change has been the ones that I just talked about on the previous slide. One number I will highlight in the bottom right-hand corner, the reductions now total $6.6 million. At the May presentation, it was $7.3 million. We've added about $700,000 in expenditures back in this package. Again, I will, you have copies of these, and I think I'll just skip over these for now. The Operation and Maintenance Fund, the board approved staff reduction of 17 positions. At the May meeting, we actually did reduction of force of 14 positions. There's three additional positions. And we continue to have discussions with the Operation and Maintenance Union, bargaining the impact of these reductions. The last item that we'd like to talk tonight about is, we talk, a lot of people talk about talking outside the box or thinking outside the box, and we've put some items for the board as discussion items at this point, but three potential revenue sources for the board to consider. The first one, we looked at the tax rates in the Education Fund and the Operation and Maintenance Fund for Peoria and the other unit districts in Peoria County. Our Education Fund tax rate is at the maximum of $2.18. The average for the other county schools in, or the unit district schools in Peoria averages a little over $3 per $100 of assessed valuation. So the difference between our tax rate and the other Peoria County schools is about 86 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. So basically, our Education Fund tax rate is very low.
Question on that is, why is that?
That is, we are taxing at the maximum tax rate, so that's been set by the district. To go above that, we would have to go to a voter referendum.
Is that by state requirement, or is that a district decision in its entirety?
It's a state process to go through the referendum to increase the tax rate. The tax rate is set in statute. It must have been increased at one point. I think in statute, it's 1.8, something like that.
Why are some of those other school districts have higher, I mean, why do they all have higher rates than we do?
They obviously have had a referendum.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, we were surprised at the numbers and double-checked our numbers with the county supervisor, so.
Mr. Will Coxon, do you know if the sum total of all the funds that we tax to, is it still that proportional kind of figure, or are there other, some of the other districts' funds at higher rates or lower rates, and how does it balance out?
Yeah, I didn't put that together, but I can.
Yeah.
The total tax rate. This table showed us two things. One, our Education Fund tax rate seems lower than other county schools. And again, this is for discussion at this point. If the board is interested, we can gather more information and bring some recommendations back to you. The Operation and Maintenance Fund, which, as Mike said, this really, percentage-wise, is possibly in worse shape than the Education Fund, but our tax rate is actually pretty much on par with the other county schools as far as the O&M rate goes. So again, we're presenting these for discussion items. We'd be more than happy to bring more information to the board if you would like. The next slide is just what a potential increase in the Education Fund tax rate could be. So again, we were about 86 cents below the average. A 50 cent increase in our Education Fund tax rate would generate about $6.6 million a year in additional property tax levy.
The next revenue thing we could look at is the county school facility sales tax, which was on the ballot two marches ago. And most counties have done this multiple times. You know, some have passed it after a couple tries, some have not. But just to remind you exactly what this is, for those of you who haven't been part of the discussions, the state statute allows us, allows individual counties to ask for a 1% sales tax to fund school facility improvement costs. That 1% that is gathered in each county is then divided by the percentage of students as a percentage of the total students in the county. So District 150 has like 49% of the students in Peoria County, so we would receive basically half of the money raised, which would be about $9 million. Everything that normally has a sales tax, excluding cars, trucks, unprepared food, drugs, things like that, this is all part of the sales tax statute. It could be used on only school facilities, can't be used on operating costs, textbooks, buses, salaries, overhead, those kind of things, it cannot be used on that. It would only be able to use in sales tax. That money goes into a separate fund. You know, it would be audited as a separate fund so that there would be no co-mingling of funds or anything. So that is what it could be used for. This is all as part of the Illinois statute of what you can do with it. If we decided to pursue this again, the board would have to ask for it to be on the ballot in November of 2016 would be the next time you could probably do this. More than 50% of the schools in Peoria County would have to ask for it to be on the ballot, so that would be the next possible date. If you talk to the various people that have done this in the past, they encourage you to do it, the sooner you get started, the better, as far as advocacy and helping groups form to do advocacy. So, you know, the sooner you decide to do something like this, the more likely it is to pass, obviously. So that's another option that could be done if you would like us to look into it further.
Just a couple follow-up notes to that. There's a consulting firm that has worked with a lot of school districts throughout the state and helped them pass this referendum. Their counsel was that the best time to do this is at a presidential election, so November 16 would be a good time to do this. The district went for this referendum a short time ago, and the counsel is that we, when we do this again, we make it a much more community-based effort rather than a district-based effort. You need to get community support for these kinds, this referendum. Last thing I'd like to talk about is health, life, safety bonds. Our buildings are inspected periodically by licensed architect engineers who look for violations of the school code in schools. Currently, the district has about $10 million in violations that need immediate attention and $7 million plus that need to be addressed within a year. So we need to find a funding source to address these issues. Health, life, safety bond issue is a likely funding source for this. But as Mike mentioned earlier, the county facility sales tax is another way to fund health, life, safety issues. The difference, one difference would be, health, life, safety bonds are going to be completely paid by property owners in Peoria, Peoria School District, where a county facility sales tax would be paid by Peoria residents, but it would also be paid by visitors and others coming into the area. Next steps, again, we're always open to options or input on budget reduction options, although we are getting late in the process. In August, we're going to bring a proposed budget to the board and put on public display, and in September, the board will need to approve the '16 budget. And as I mentioned earlier, as soon as the board adopts the '16 budget, we will start on FY '16 budget planning and budget development. So we'd be pleased to try to answer any questions you have.
Let me turn the lights back on.
Mr. Will Coxon, understanding that the counsel that you've received about the potential for a referendum on any new revenue, you know, the earlier you start, the more time there is to gain awareness. When, from a logistical standpoint, if the board was to decide to move ahead on any of those options, when's the last possible date we could approve something and put it on November 2016?
I'm not, I don't have an answer to that. When is the last time you can actually get it on the ballot? The folks that have done this around the state, the consultants we've talked to, were actually late in the process to get this started. We should have started by now, at least building the infrastructure for community involvement. So I can get an answer to that. I'm not sure when the deadline is to get it placed on the ballot, but to get the process going, I think it should happen soon if we're going to do this.
Yeah, I'll just make a small comment. I think the chance of success of a ballot referendum is highly dependent on the community members feeling that we're moving in the right direction and that we've taken probably several very good steps along the path. You know, in order to, if that's an option that the board wants to consider, I'd like us to have the time and the opportunity to make those improvements that may or may not sell the community on our speed and our effectiveness.
Any other questions?
Comments?
Two things, and I mentioned these before, that I'd still like you to look at strongly again, and they're both on already, but I want to take another closer look at them. And they're not huge items, but every little bit helps. And the first one is the food. And I know in the information you gave us, it said it was going to a reduction of $50,000. And I know that the number that we spend, spent in the last few years has been closer to $160,000. I think we need to look at that and see if we can't reduce that by more. I know, for example, when they have, let's say, principal trainings and they give a catered lunch every day, give people an hour to go out and decompress and that kind of thing rather than providing that. The other thing I'd like us to look at very closely is... The other thing I'd like us to look at very closely is travel. A few years ago, when we were trying to find ways to cut money, we sort of put a moratorium on most, if not all, educational fund travel. The other thing I would like, and I know a lot of the grants are already done for this year, but we keep hearing that there's a certain amount of percentage of a grant that has to be spent on travel. I don't think it's really on travel, it's professional development. And I think we need to look more at doing it here, so we don't have to send 200 people to a conference somewhere for the professional development. So I think those are two areas I would like you to look at closely again and see if there's any way we can cut even a little bit more in those two areas.
Sure. Thank you.
I believe Ms. Wolfmeyer, this year's agenda has already addressed the meal, part of the meal problem that you talked about. They have eliminated those meals and allowing people to go out for an hour on this year's professional development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple.
Yes.
You mentioned a 20% reduction in the family core budget, but the number we're voting on, on that resolution tonight is the same dollar amount as it was last year. Is that?
It's 386.
Yeah. The number I have down is 395,000. It was cut from 494. There's nine FTEs, and it was originally 11, so.
Well, I looked at the number we voted on last year, and it was identical this year to last year.
To the 395?
Whatever it was, the two numbers were the same, so. I had the agenda from the equivalent meeting last year where we voted on that. You might want to take a look at that, Mark. And I think the number of FTEs was the same, but I know that they were maybe allocated differently. That's, that's number one. Number two, I have, if you take a look at the history of the county facility sales tax, it's passed in a number of areas. It lost by about the same percentages in Tazewell, Woodford, and Peoria County when it was on the ballot in the last year or so. I am, I would certainly like to see us pursue that, but I think the chances of that passing are low. If you take a look at perhaps the satisfaction with the school districts in the other two counties, they may be considered more satisfying to the public, yet the percentage of no votes was about the same as it was in Peoria County, so. And taking into account Mr. Adler's comments, which I think are well, well-made and well-reasoned, I'm not sure that's enough to overcome that gap. It was about two-thirds, one-third, so it was a big number. One of the things that we ought to think about is doing what I believe was done in East Peoria, and that is, consider approaching the city of Peoria for a half-cent sales tax, only within the city of Peoria, only dedicated as District 150, and seeing if that is a possibility. I know they've done a quarter-percent sales tax with a referendum for the Riverfront Museum, and I think that's something that we ought to at least have on our list of possibilities. Another thing to consider is, when they announced the downtown conservation TIF district, we agreed with the city that they would work with us to find a way to take some of those funds, and those may be several years out. But, but I would note, if you take a look at the project that's going to be built there, eventually, there are two buildings, the administration building and the parking deck, which are currently on our tax rolls. And when that project is finished, both of those will have been demolished or replaced by structures that are in the TIF zone. So we will lose the EAV of those two buildings. So the assumptions going forward on our EAV are probably going to have to go down unless there's an equivalent commercial property built elsewhere that's not in the TIF district. And then finally, I would say, we have consistently under, consistently overestimated how much we're going to get from the state, and the state has continued to provide less than we expect. And I would say that whatever number we, they say we're going to provide, we should budget for some percentage less than that, perhaps 10 to 12%, because they just aren't reliable. And they pull the rug out from under school districts at the very last minute. They have chosen over many, many years to put money elsewhere and still require districts to do things that they don't pay us for, and that's got to come to a halt. So I would suggest that the budget forecast going forward takes a real hard look at what your real expected income from the state is and not what they say it's going to be. So that's my viewpoint on it.
In reference to the family core agreement, we are, we are one, two, three, four, five positions less than we were last year. Lincoln, Harrison, Manuel, Peoria High North, and Treewind lost coordinators.
And is the dollar amount the same or less than last year?
I suspect it would be less.
No.
Do we need to pull that, or can we?
I've got, we'll go dig those numbers up.
I've got the agenda here, which had that number on it. I can find it here, but it's, it seemed to me that that was, that was not any different, so. I don't know how to reconcile that, but it just, yeah. Well, the problem is, we're voting on a number tonight.
Yes.
If the number's not right, I don't want to vote on it.
For the contract.
Yep.
So what's your pleasure?
Well, let's, let's find out what it was, and if I could get back to that.
When we get to the consent agenda, if someone wants to move to the.
I'll take a look at that while we're doing other things here. So thank you very much for your forbearance of my questions.
Any other questions?
I do have one more.
Yes, Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
So on the LEAT, we're going to one school instead of two, and it said that the money that Mr. Cannon raises is going, it's not going to be to offset the cost at that one school, it's going to be only for additional things, or just a combination of?
It will actually be subtracted from the license fees.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not an additional $10,000.
No, I'm not, but I'm.
No, not that.
That's not what I'm saying. The money that he's going to go out and raise, fundraise, it, the way it read is that it would be used for additional LEAT programming. So does that mean it's not going to be used to offset the cost of Lincoln?
That's correct.
What other kind of things are they going to be doing?
A second school, possibly.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Will Coxon.
Thank you.
Now, we're at approval of the minutes for June 15th, 2015, and July 1st, 2015. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Would you please call a roll?
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Lovell?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Hastic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
If I could interject here, the agenda from July 21st, 2014, had the family core amount of 386, 478.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
You're welcome.
We determine, under the consent agenda, whether to pull that or not until the more clarifications come. If there's nothing else. We're now at the place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 schools. The board comes, welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Realizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that need to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of the meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes, or even five minutes, may not be enough. Time for some of you to express your thoughts. So we have installed a comment box over on the table for your convenience. Our board secretary, Ms. Dixon, will pull those and collect those comments after each board meeting and compile and share with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no other, and no one under the age of 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker this evening, we welcome Ms. Sharon Cruz. Tonight, I would like you to consider the benefits of a return to high school summer school, and I'm going to choke myself. I'm here to beg, actually. In 2012-13, approximately 635 high school students failed a semester of English. Probably approximately the same number of students failed an English course in the following two years. My guess is that many of those estimated 1,800 students have not yet made up the English course. My FOIA request did ask if, when, and how these courses were retaken and the grades received. For understandable reasons, the research department found it too difficult to correlate the courses failed with the data about the courses retaken. Of course, students fail other required courses that could and should be made up in summer school. At one time, the district did not allow students to take two English classes at the same time, which meant summer school was a necessity. The reasoning was that students who struggled with English will struggle even more when they have two English classes every day, and the chances of failing at another English class is a definite possibility. Class size is also adversely affected by students repeating required classes during the school day. My 30 years' experience of summer school, which I loved, I found that the three-hour summer school classes allowed me to spend more time with individual students who needed extra help. During the school year, struggling students found it difficult to juggle requirements of four to six classes. In summer school, they could concentrate all their efforts on one or two subjects. A negative that is really a positive is that the threat of summer school is an incentive for students to work harder during the school year. Of the 635 failures in 2012-13, at least 198 retook the course with compass learning or credit recovery, I assume. The cynic in me believes that compass learning only helps with scheduling and meeting the no child left behind goal of raising graduation rates by giving students an easier way out. I doubt that compass learning follows the adopted English curriculum. English classes require students to respond in writing and in discussion to literary works. How are those requirements met with computer learning? I believe students are being cheated with that summer school. Please check into the possibility of using Title I funds for summer school if self-funding is out of the question. As an aside, while I was working with the data, I wondered why the course titles were changed from English I to VIII to English I to IV, first semester, second semester. I found that confusing. And Dr. Karat, I am pleased to see two bids awarded tonight. We haven't been seeing those lately. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, we want to welcome Mr. Terry Knapp.
Yes, I'd like you to pull up, you have in front of you a letter penned, I believe, by Ms. Lathan, and a second sheet with that. I'd like to make a couple of comments about that. I'd like to caution, first of all, Mr. Adler, and Ms. Jackson, and Dr. Karat, as they listen to this, because I find it reprehensible, in my estimation. The letter on its front, and I'm only going to refer to the second paragraph of this letter, if you don't have it in front of you, says, and this is Dr. Karat's word, excuse me, Dr. Lathan's words, I presume. "I have the authority as superintendent for Peoria Public Schools to commit to Paxton-Patterson that a purchase order will be issued in the amount of $54,130 for all items listed on the attached proposal to Calvin Cooley School. I expect that purchase order will be issued July 1, 2015, and that your invoice will be expedited for a very prompt payment." Now, this letter was written December 16th of 2014. This is a, you know, a year preceding guaranteeing payment of something that we have not yet approved a budget for. So we're, literally, there could be letters out there guaranteeing vendors payment that you are not even aware of. And if, I'm assuming the board was aware of this. That's why, you know, I referred to the other people who wouldn't have been aware of this particular letter. I think it's very important to look at the second page. After this letter was written, I don't know what the response of the CEO of the company was to Lathan, but it surely shows here that some type of grant was developed, and it was paid for out of this particular grant race to the top. I don't know if that was proper payment out of that grant or not, but the two schools were reimbursed. I think that there are probably more than two schools that were receiving, or to receive that particular type of money. I don't know if they've been paid off yet or not, but I hope that Dr. Karat doesn't get in over her head with things that were purchased last year that have to be paid this year. It's quite obvious that was the intent of this letter. Now, I think it's, you know, deceitful and fraudulent that this letter is put out in this fashion. I don't think, Mr. Royer, that this is proper way to do school financing. I just, I don't see it. I mean, I don't know who approved this, if the board president, Ms. Wolfmeyer approved it, or who approved it. This type of activity should not occur. You should be aware also that in this, you would be wanting to know the response of the CEO, because obviously, there was a letter. I mean, we can FOIA that, but in the age of new transparency, I'm sure you can look that up yourself and share that with your board members and see what the CEO said. I'm thinking the CEO might have said, "I can't do this," and that's why it was paid for out of the race to the top grant.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Any response to the audience presentation? From a board member or Dr. Karat? If there's no response, we are at information items. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. It's in your packet. Any questions? Expenditures over $2,500? No questions? Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests.
Thank you, Madam President. Since our last board meeting on June 15th, we received seven new Freedom of Information Act requests. All of these new requests were filled. There are two pending requests noted on the June 15th board report. Those were actually filled. So we have received 67 requests for this calendar year at a total cost of $546.39.
Thank you. Organizational update.
Thank you, Madam President. Since Tuesday afternoon last week, I have met and reconnected with many staff members on the administrative team. I still have several to speak with this week. My focus is to ensure that our school are ready to begin the school, the new school year. I also wanted to give kudos to Principal Powers and the assistant principal there at Valeska Hinton, Ms. Virily Smith. They welcomed their staff today, and. They welcomed their staff today, and they had a thoughtful agenda. Their staff, the staff, the teachers were enthusiastic and, and energized for the new year. We welcome our students just four weeks from today, which will be August seventeenth. That will be the first day of school, and it's a full day for all students. Parents, back, back-to-school packets will be mailed to returning families this week. So you should receive your back-to-school packets this week. And enrollment information and upcoming information are also available on our, our website. So any information you need about enrollment and any upcoming events, that's on District one fifty's website, which is www.psd150.org. And I would also like to remind families that backpack Peoria will be held at the Dream Center this coming Saturday from nine to twelve, and I will be there along with our principals to welcome our students and give away free backpacks. And thanks to the Dream Center for hosting this event again with us. We really appreciate their collaboration. Also, online registration is open, opens on August first through Skywood Family Access. So again, online registration opens on August first through Skywood's Family Access. Today, all principals, assistant principals, and special ed coordinators returned to their buildings to prepare for the new year. They're, they're very, very busy in their buildings, finalizing staffing, schedules, and, and preparing for the new year. Thursday, we will meet with all principals for operational meeting. So I'll meet with all principals on Thursday for an operational meeting. Tomorrow, Valeska Hinton welcomes students back to the school year, to begin the school year. And again, I was able to meet with staff and Ms. Powers and, and the team, and they're off to a great start. And as you can see, our human resources report, we have several administrative openings to fill, and we're, we are working to get those filled quickly with strong candidates. I have provided board members with a draft organizational chart that will continue to work through as we fill positions. My goal is to provide as much consistency as possible, which will help us to get the school year off to a great start. I would like to commend the administrative team for being patient with me during the transition, as we move our district forward to prepare for the great, for the, for a great year. Thank you, team. And as we get closer to the school year and fill our open positions, we will, of course, post the organizational chart and responsibilities on the district's website. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Karat? Comment, questions? Okay, now we're at our consent agenda. Mr. Roy.
Thank you, Madam President. The items on this evening's consent agenda include item number one, gifts to the school district at this meeting, one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ten cents, and that is year-to-date, and those are being reported on a fiscal year-to-date starting July one. Proposed actions, the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors, six hundred dollars from Sunita Scott, nine hundred and forty-two dollars from Alexander Steakhouse, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars by Barnes &amp; Noble, and twenty-one dollars by Kelly Seed and Hardware for various supplies. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the human resources report, the proposed action is appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, athletic training agreement. Proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with Athletico Management LLC to provide athletic training services for student athletes, including services at all Vardis football games, home and away, and playoff games, all home athletic events, practices held at the schools, as well as many other services outlined in the attached contract. The costs of these services from August ten, two thousand fifteen, through July thirty-one, two thousand sixteen are fifty-seven thousand dollars. Item number six, mental health abeyance proposal. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached proposal for Life Transformational Counseling LLC, Provide-A-Queen-of-Howard, LCPCC, NCC, to provide mental health and substance abuse services to youth and families in District one fifty per Board Policy seven colon one ninety AP. The cost of these services from June one, two thousand fifteen, through May thirty-one, two thousand sixteen will be fixed, fifty-six thousand dollars. Item number seven, Secondary Transitional Experience Program, STEP, contract approval, FY sixteen. The proposed action is that authorization is granted for the administration to renew its third-party cooperative agreement for twenty sixteen, FY sixteen, with the Department of Human Services Division of Reappralidation Services, DHS slash DRS, to continue operation of the Transition Specialist Program and the Secondary Transitional Experience Program, STEP. Total cost for the Transitional, Transition Specialist Program is two hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty cents, with DRS funding of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Peoria Public Schools committed, commitment is sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty, forty cents. DRS funding commitment for the STEP program is one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. All STEP program costs are fully covered by the grant. However, the district is required to support at least twenty percent of the salaries for the transition, transition specialists. Item number eight, Family Corps Counseling Service contract approval. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the attached contract with Family Corps to provide nine full-time family school liaisons for the school-based attendance intervention and suspension slash expulsion prevention services to at-risk students at Calvin Coolidge with one FTE, Woodrow Wilson one FTE, Manual Academy two FTEs, Heinz one FTE, Franklin one FTE, Thomas Jenniferston one FTE, Keller point five FTE, Northmore point five FTE, and Charter Oak one FTE. Total cost of this one-year contract is three hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which includes services in a case management format in order to address the needs of at-risk students. Funding for Family Corps will be through Title I. Item nine, Contract Resolution with Elite Program, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve an agreement with the Elite Programs. This agreement authorizes the expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars to reimburse Mr. Carl Cannon for startup costs in preparing elite services for benefit of District one ser, one fifty students during the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. This agreement also allows for Carl Cannon to begin raising funds to support the cost of the Elite Programs in District one fifty with restrictions as stated. Item number ten, Award of Oil Bid. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached oil bid from Molo Oil Company for the school year ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen. Oil is to be used for district school buses and vehicles. Item number eleven, Award of Tire Bid. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached tire bid from Peoria Tire for the school year ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen. Tires are to be used for district school buses. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any items the board members would like to pull for separate votes?
Number nine.
Number nine? Okay. Anyone else?
I would, in light of the question about the cost of the Family Corps, do we want to take that as a separate item? Because it is the exact same number this year as last year. So.
So would you like to pull number?
I'd, I'd.
Eight.
I'd ask us to pull number eight and have a discussion about that at least, so that we can at least maybe deal with that separately.
Can we, can we pull ten and eleven also?
Ten and eleven? Is that for a separate vote or discussion? A separate vote?
That would be a separate vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you have four separate votes.
Ten, ten, eleven, and nine. Okay, all items with the exception of eight, nine, ten, and eleven. May I, may I receive a motion and a second on that?
So moved.
Madam President. Well, is there any discussion, first of all, before we vote?
On number five, the.
On number five, the Athletic Training Agreement, is that the same company we used last year? Okay.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Last, last year it was Accelerated.
You said, she says the same.
Did they change?
They just changed names. It's the same company that.
Oh, okay. I, I thought the name was di, I thought the name was different.
Yeah, it's, they changed over to Athlete, but it's the same thing that we did last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, Ms. Roy.
Is, is that including concussion protocols, or is that a different organization?
No, sorry, it's the same thing. They'll do the same training, maybe last year, all the coaches and the parents and students. They'll do the whole line, all, all of the same trains we did last year, they'll do the same thing this year.
Thank you.
And they'll serve our middle schools like they did last year, middle schools on us.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the other items? Madam President, would you call a roll?
Mr. Edman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Caste.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Let's move to item number nine. Eight. Number eight, yes. You were the first one. Item number eight, Family Corps.
Aye.
Should we have the, do we want to have a motion and a second on that before discussion? Or what is your pleasure?
If someone wants to move that, that's fine. I just.
Well, why don't we have a discussion first in case we decide to pull it? Isn't this the one that?
Yeah.
There's a difference, and if, if we pull it, then there's no point in having a motion and a second. But I guess the question is, did you get any other information?
Yeah, I got, Mike ran back and printed out the POs with Family Corps. There was a blanket PO of the three eighty-six, four seventy-nine, but then there were some additional POs that, it looks like there were separate ones for Manual, Thomas Jefferson, Harrison, Peoria North, and Treewind. Looks like they were on separate POs, so.
They weren't part of the contract, you're saying?
There was a blanket PO that was the three eighty-six that was, I assume, the ones that were on the contract, but then there were additional POs. Is that how, is that how you look at it? Yeah.
Does anybody remember, did we, did we add schools after that contract last year? And that's why there might be separate POs? Does anybody remember?
I can go back and look at the file that had it on.
I mean, if that's the case, as long as we don't, aren't going to have additional POs again, then it looks like it was more expensive last year. Because a couple of those schools are the schools that are being removed.
Right.
Here, if I could add to this. They were to provide, this is the resolution on July twenty-first, nine full-time school liaisons, Calvin Coolidge one, Woodrow Wilson one, Manual Academy two, Heinz one, Franklin one, Lincoln one, Keller point five, Thomas Jefferson point five, Northmore point five, and Charter Oak point five. Total cost is three eighty-six, four seventy-eight, which.
So those schools were added later?
Well, Manual is on here with two, so they must have added another one at Manual.
But, because Peoria North was not on that list.
No.
Is Treewind in that list?
No.
So that's what it is, is last year we added, we added more schools afterwards. I don't know if there's another action item later down the road, but that's the original contract. This is going to be for the same numbers, the same schools as what we're doing this year, but those schools that were added later have now, are now being removed. So it makes sense that it's the same amount.
But.
As long as we aren't going to add more schools.
Why, why would we have added other schools, just the requirement? Why wouldn't they have been in one, under one contract, or do we, did the need arise and it became evident that was needed? That would be the question.
I'm assuming that's what it is. I don't know if there's anybody here that knows the answer to that, but that's obviously what we did, because it's, it's POs for different schools, and those are, they evidently were on the record somewhere because we're taking them off.
Well, are, are we going to end up with more supplementary POs later? That would be the question.
And I do kind of wonder about that, why we would not be having that type of support service for Peoria High School.
No, Peoria High North.
Peoria High, yeah, oh, Peoria.
Well, those are one of the recommendations that, to remove for the budget cuts, to reduce the Family Corps costs. So I don't.
Well, we were told we had counselors in every school though, already. Do we still have counselors in every school? So these counselors were individuals are in addition to the counselors that we already have in the school.
A lot of, a lot of it you had, the people built them into their Title I budgets because like Charter Oak, Charter Oak, for example, does not have a counselor, a District one fifty counselor, but because Family Corps has supported them in the last year, they built them into their Title I budget, wanting to keep them because they felt like the support was necessary and helpful because they don't have, right now, the District one fifty counselors are in middle and high schools. So those principals had those options to build them into their Title I budgets for this coming, this coming up school year.
So the ones that, that were cutting, are you saying that perhaps they didn't, those principals didn't want to use their Title I funds?
They felt that what they had.
Was sufficient.
And their schools were sufficient, and they didn't need to build those extra in the Title I budgets. Those were the discussions that we had in our, in our Title I budget meetings.
Okay.
So I know for, for the schools that I supervise, they chose, like Northmore, Keller, still one, they always split one, and they wanted to continue that, so they built it into their Title I budget.
So it sounds to me like those schools that are not keeping them are, are not going to be in the new budget.
That, that's sort of how I understand.
I mean, that's what the recommendation is, and, and I'm assuming, so, I, I mean, it still makes sense that the original contract is the same amount, we added those extra schools for whatever reason later on, and they are now being taken out.
And that's the twenty percent reduction.
Right.
Is that how that?
Yeah, because the, the number we were carrying was, that's what we mentioned, it was above the.
Yeah.
But you were including the ones that were added on.
Right.
So, I mean, if there's documentation somewhere that they were added on.
So.
So this would be.
Which means they, they added twenty-five percent to the spending on this number to get to that whole number last year. So.
Yeah, the rise here was four ninety-four.
So that's about right. Okay. Well.
Does that answer your question?
I, I believe so, yes. I, I guess. But, but, it's, well, let, let's not have these things piecemealed out. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it. If not, let's, let's not.
Well, and we can do that, except some, sometimes things do come up later on. I mean, it could be that those schools decided after that, that meeting, they wanted to use some of their Title I funds for that purpose. I'm sure if, I mean, I'm sure it came to the board, and we added those, so.
Okay.
I mean, things like that are going to happen, but as long as we can see where that extra money came from and what it was used for, and it's just that those schools, that was a way to cut it, because those schools don't want to use their, I'm sure they were told, if you want to do it, keep, you have to use your Title I funds, they decided they didn't want to do that. So we probably can go ahead with this, with this figure.
Yeah, I, that's fair.
I just have a quick question. All these positions funded on the Title I?
Yes.
Everything that's in here?
I'll move approval on this item then.
Okay. Move the second, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number nine.
Madam President, I'm going to abstain from voting on this issue, this issue due to family involvement in this program as a volunteer.
Item number nine.
Yes, Madam President. We've not had a contract proposal to come before us for this need before, and I was just wondering how or why this is being proposed, if someone can give a little bit more detailed information, which is the ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars to reimburse Mr. Cannon for startup costs.
The idea is that the Elite Program provides value to our district, and so what we've done is, we've had a discussion, the team and I met with them last week, and we agreed to scale back to one building and also provide assistance regarding startup, with startup cost while we continue to work out contracts and. while we continue to work out contracts and agreements.
Since we've not had a request before for startup costs, I'm just wondering, what are these startup costs, and why the difference, why this year we're being requested to provide up to $10,000 for startup costs?
Right. In the past, the agreements were pretty much finalized, and by now, they knew, they, they had dollars, and they had a contract, and they were ready to go, and they were in buildings already. But because of, because of the delay regarding the agreement, and whether or not they were going to continue services in a building, they're sort of behind schedule, and the decision was to provide some support for them and subtract it from, from their total costs once that, that's been determined, which will be significantly less than last year's cost.
So, what I'm wondering is, they then were not perhaps expecting to have the contract renewed? I'm just wondering why the funds weren't there if they were hoping and expecting to, you know, have the program? And especially now, since the cost is going back to one school, what then would be the need to have a reimbursement cost?
Well, they're excited about working with us and collaborating with us, and it, it will be, it will be reduced from their total cost, so it's, there's, there's no injury.
If I could add to this, this was not requested by ALLETE. This was the district's...
That was going to be my next question.
This was the district's way of dealing with the startup, because the next board meeting is only, the next board meeting is the 10th of August, and the time between today and the 10th of August would not allow them enough time to get ready for the start of school on August 17th. So this is a stopgap measure to be prepared, help them get prepared for the start of school.
So ALLETE did not request this, and this is being offered by the district?
That's, that's the way that was done, yes.
Have the startup costs, I know you spoke in general what they are. Do we know in specific of what the $10,000 could be for?
Well, I think that, if I could, is it on the list? I think I could speak to the fact that I believe the process is that they start meeting with those families of the schools that they're going to be working in ahead of time during the summer.
So it's more for the outreach that they would normally do?
Right, they get those contracts with families and meet with every, every parent or every student ahead of time before school starts, and I think that's part of it, according to the documents that they, you have, also have documented in your packet that we got late.
So if Mr. Cannon did not request this, but the district offered it, I guess I'm just trying to, I understand what it is for, but if this type of offer had not happened before, why this year are we making this? And will this set some type of precedent in the following years?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask the attorney, because he sat in on that meeting, Rick, can you give a rationale for the $10,000 and...
The, we have basically two understandings that we reached in the meeting last week. One is, one is for the $10,000, and the other is, is the idea that ALLETE will open at least one school, in one school. And the resolution that was drafted subsequently to the meeting really outlines the process for getting a, a final agreement in place by the time of the next, next board meeting. And we are, we are very much behind schedule, and I think that's, that's the reason for this, is that the board's discussion on this particular topic dragged out over, over several months, and, you know, we're late in coming to a resolution of this. So if, if you want the program to have any hope of starting at the beginning of school, then, then that's what, that's what the $10,000 is to facilitate. And I would contemplate that whatever the agreed-upon contract price for services provided by ALLETE during the course of the next school year includes that $10,000. So it's kind of, kind of a paying ahead, so to speak.
Okay, so I guess I, again, just want to be clear, we're saying that the district offered this to ALLETE and to Mr. Cannon. We're just now, as a board, discussing this, so who made the offer? I know you're saying the district, but...
I did not personally.
Well, who personally made the offer?
I, I received a slip of paper that, that had, I think, a draft of an action item for tonight. I was asked to comment on it, and so, and then we had the meeting, and the $10,000 was kind of an established fact by the time I became involved in it.
This has not been offered to him yet, except...
Well, I know it hasn't been offered to him yet, but I'm just trying to understand where did the offer originate it from, since this is the first time we've done something like this, and the possibility of maybe it happening again. I'm just wondering.
Well, we had the, we, the meeting was held with them, and they were talking about all the things that needed to be done, and they were behind schedule, and overall, it was, the decision was made to provide some support for, to them, and then subtract that from the total cost, so...
I understand why it was made. I'm just wondering the origination of the offer, who did it come from? We're saying the board is making the offer, but someone on the board had to begin...
Well, we didn't, there was nobody on the board as part of that meeting. That was Mark Riggs, superintendent, and I, and I guess the ALLETE people. There wasn't anybody on the board, so I don't think we said the board made it.
So it's a recommendation, the recommendation is to...
I was just wondering, who made the recommendation? An individual had to do it, so who was the individual that made the recommendation? Obviously, that's not going to be known here in this discussion. Then, in regards to the $10,000, is that in addition to, and I heard you speak to that earlier, or will that, this isn't an additional $10,000, it's what would be subtracted out of any other monies that the district would pay ALLETE?
That's correct. Okay, that's correct.
So is there anything to show forth that in terms of this contract, that that money is expected to somehow be paid back or subtracted?
Well, I, I think we'll incorporate that into the drafting of the agreement, is how that, how that money is going to be handled.
Okay, so when we vote tonight?
We're doing this with a bit of duct tape here, because we're so late.
Yeah. So it is definitely publicly understood that this $10,000 is not extra money given, but is expected to come back to the district?
I think of it as a down payment on the contract, whatever that is.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Adler?
Madam President, I would just say that, that the ALLETE program is a strong community partner, and I think we all share a lot of hope to improve the discipline situation at a number of our schools, and I would, I would move the question. I support this resolution.
Anyone else?
We have not had a motion and a second.
I'm looking for...
I would totally agree with, with Mr. Adler. One thing that, that, as I went around and talked to people over the last year, one of the issues that was loud and clear is, how's the district going to deal with discipline? And what, what, what is the board going to do to make sure that we have kids in the school, and they are learning, and the kids that are disrupting classes, there's, there's ways to deal with those children and work with them to get, to make sure all of our kids are learning. And I'm going to vote for this. I think this is the beginning of not only ALLETE, but there might be others that might want to come to this district and say, how can I help? And we can look at all of those things, but I think that we're at the 1st of July, of August. School is starting in 17 days. We've got to get things in line, and it doesn't matter who, I don't think it really matters who, who brought it, the administration brought it. I don't think, no one from this board that I know of brought anything regarding ALLETE to, to the administration or the board. I'm in favor of it, and I'm going to be voting for it.
Any other comments?
I would just add, in our packet tonight, I noticed there is a, a piece of academic research that talks about the impact of high school ALLETE, which is provided by the Park District at no cost to District 150, and also junior ALLETE at Harrison. And this is an academic paper that talks about the outcome-based results of that program in terms of a variety of metrics, and I think there's been a concern about how do you demonstrate that this is successful? And if you take a look at that and read through it, and the documentation that was done, that may also help alleviate some concerns about what the outcomes are with this sort of philosophy.
Any other comments or questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam President, Madam Executive, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Butler?
Nay.
Mr. Floyd?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
One ayes, one nay, one abstain.
Motion carries.
Motion here.
Okay, I believe we're at number 10. Mr. Adler?
I hate to put Josh Collins on the spot. I just have a couple of questions, if you could, could help me out a little bit. So the table...
Could you come up to the podium? Normally, we have people come up just because the media are able to hear you better. Thank you.
Thank you. So oil and tires, you know, two consumables for our buses. And on the, I guess, the, the proposed action that we're provided, there's a table of tire sizes in specific I'm thinking of that speaks to, you know, what the, what the bids came in at. Can you speak to, and those are more dimensional sizes for the tires, can you speak to the performance specs, or kind of the underlying, what you're looking for in terms of these bids? Trying to, trying to ensure that, you know, we have the, the process in place to, typically, these things are, you know, low, low bid wins, right? Just want to, you know, for my clarity, understand some of the thought process behind what's in that request. Sure.
Excuse me, were we talking about number 10 or 11? You kind of...
If it's okay, I'd like to talk about them both. They're locked together in my head.
Okay, good.
Sure. Basically, we put out a spec, what we'd like. In other words, we want a minimum tread depth. You know, we have some performance characteristics that we look for in the tire when we put it out for bid. Typically, when we get bids back, we get name brands, so they're going to be Goodyear, or they're going to be BF Goodrich, or they're going to be a, a name brand tire. And we look to make sure that they meet that those, they meet those minimum tread depths. Peoria Tire has gotten the bids from us before, and they've given us very good service, and we've had good luck with those tires. So with them being the lowest bidder for this round, we had experience with them, so we knew that we were going to get a good product from them. But typically, we make sure that they're going to meet our spec. Last year, we had several companies bid, but they did not meet our specs, so we did not go with those companies based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on this item?
I'd move approval of number 10, the award of the oil bid.
Second.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry.
No, that was the oil bid. Those were both held out.
Okay, so we're, we're going to be voting on 10 and 11. Is that right?
I just moved number 10.
Okay.
So...
So we'll do each one then. Would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
You need to vote.
Oh, aye.
Madam President, I would also move for the approval of item number 11, award of the tire bid.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, presentation and suggestions by board members. Any presentations or suggestions by board members?
I have a request. I have a request.
Okay, Mr. Floyd?
Thank you, ma'am. Several weeks ago, we approved participation in an avid conference in Florida, and I would ask the administration to provide us with some information about the outcome of that, including the number of people that attended, the number of people that canceled, and the percentage of those participating at that location, if possible, that were from District 150. And that would be my request, if I could please, under that issue.
Any other suggestions by board members? Okay, then I have a couple of things that I, I'd like to talk about briefly. I know, I don't know if any of you all noticed the little, I'm sure the board members did, notice these little cards that I put on here? By the way, I printed these, so it didn't cost the district anything. These little cards, I, I wanted to do this as, as a reminder at each board meeting, why we are here. Why we're here, why you're here, hopefully, you're here for the same reason that we're here. And today, I'll start off with, we are here to put each student's educational experience at the core of our work. I have been here all these years, and that has always been my goal, to put the student's education at the core of what I do. So I don't have any ulterior motives for being here, but each, each board meeting, I think I'll put something like out there. Not that you all don't know that, but it's just a reminder of why we're here, okay? And in addition to that, upcoming things that are going to be happening, I mentioned the, the suggestion box, and we're, we're very serious about wanting to know what your suggestions are. And we want to compile those and bring them to the board to align them with our strategic plans, planning that's coming up, and also, you know, to take, take advantage of your knowledge and experience. And also, we're going to have an app pretty soon on your phone where you can do suggestions on the phone. So Mr. Copeland has informed me that he's working on the app, and he's also working on a spot on the website that you can also drop in some comments. So for those of you, you know, which, like I say, three minutes or five minutes won't be long enough, drop in some comments, some additional comments, okay? We want to hear from you. We have developed, I have developed the committee list. There are several committees that the board manages. We have a board member, and these are all open meetings, and we have a committee as a whole, as you know. Many of us participate, have participated in that. The Strategic Communications Committee, and what we do is, we ask different board members to chair and to co-chair these meetings. It's in your packet, each of my suggestions for the board, board committees. Parent-teacher advisory, building committee, policy committee, behavioral intervention committee. I think that was a mandate from the state as well. I'm not sure, you know, how much we do with that. I think you don't have to meet every month, but these meetings will be posted within the 48 hours, as they are supposed to be. I've also added a producery management committee, and we'll be working with Mark and trying to put together that committee that will be actually looking at everything. I know we have auditors, but we want to look at everything, whether we are doing the same thing and expecting different results, or, or like one year, Mrs. Wolfmeyer and I participated in a budget cut committee where we found out that we had been paying for 40 phones that nobody was using. See what I'm saying? So it's, it's, it's like... So it's, it's, it's like looking beneath the surface and kind of looking out five years out and, and thinking outside of the box and doing something different than what we've always done. Always depend on state monies, federal monies, grants, so maybe there's some expertise can help us look at something else. I recently had a meeting, was invited to meet with the Vice President of Caterpillar in Community Affairs, and he's very interested in what can we do to help the district, you know? And to look at the kinds of things that they want the workers to be ready for their business when they leave the school. They also are interested in having those people in our community educated, ready, trained to be able to take advantage of some of the things that, some of the opportunities that are coming up. So I was, I was pleased to be invited to that and looking forward to having some further meetings with him. I think that's it, the board report. Every year, we have these, now these you can't come to. These are the discipline committees. There are two board members usually look at, we don't have any discipline this week, thank goodness, because school hasn't started. But after school start, there is a list of people who will be looking at all of the suspensions and expulsions, those suspensions that have been appealed and those expulsions. There are two people that usually take a look at all of those, along with the, the staff person for that, and look at whether or not the infraction warrants the, warrants the punishment for that. So we're looking forward to, maybe looking at how to, how to change that, so it's not soup warmed over, the same, same, you know, same stuff, different day. That's about what I have as for, as board comments. Anybody else have anything?
Mrs. Ross?
Yes, Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
To piggyback on what Mr. Cloy said about- He was talking about the, the avid trip and, and people who canceled. And I don't know if we have anything in the policy that addresses this, but as, as much money as we sometimes spend on travel for people, and I know there are legitimate reasons why people have to back out at the last minute and we can't get the money back, but I, I think we need to start looking at, when people do cancel at the last minute, looking at what the reasons are, and if there aren't really good reasons and we've had to lose that money, then perhaps not let those people travel again. I think we need to be responsible with when we ask to go to conferences or teachers or employees ask to do that, and obviously, there are things that come up, but we need to, I just want to make sure that that isn't happening a whole lot and for no reason. And it could be that it's not an issue, but if we could maybe keep an eye on that this year and see if it is an issue or not that we need to look at. Thank you.
Sure. I do have a, a list in front of me, and I'm looking at reasons. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 individuals who apparently were not able to attend. Reasons include sick resignations, one, two, three, four, five resignations, couple of new positions, others took positions outside of the district. There were a couple of question marks. One situation, someone's mother passed away and they had to travel out of state.
And I don't know what the answer to that is, but part of the problem is that these reservations and everything were made so far ahead, and I know you have to do that sometimes for the registrations and to get airfare. And I don't know what the answer is, but particularly, the money that we lost on people who resigned. And I don't know what the answer is, because you, obviously, you can't, they're not going to travel for us anymore, and, and there's nothing that says they have to repay the money. But if, if you look at that, that money that we, we lost, and nobody even got anything out of that conference, so.
You made a recommendation earlier, and you said, bring the trainer to us.
Right. And, and I also understand there are times, depending on what it is, that they can't, that can't be done. If we can do that, that's great, but I guess I, my personal request to you would be to take a good look at that conference for next summer and give us a heads up way earlier than we got this year. I think that was the biggest problem, is that we got it late, there's nothing we could do-
After the fact.
You know, after the fact, and even though I think when we approved the Title I budget, it was in there, we don't remember all the little things that are, all the things that are in that budget, and it would have just been nice if I had a heads up. So thank you.
All these, all this cost to Title I? This was education, wasn't it? Education, all of it?
It's my understanding, it's current, Title I.
What is Title I?
It's my, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
Did you get one?
Yeah, he's got one. Okay.
Well, thank you. That's a very prompt response to a request.
I anticipated that.
Well, I asked you about it earlier too, so thank you.
So did Ms. Ross.
Okay. Go ahead.
We don't have any board committees out with reports, except for the Policy Committee, I believe, is working on a policy. Mr. Cloy?
It's the operational services policy, which is really the purchasing policy, where we had a discussion at some length a couple meetings ago about the fact that our process was really backwards, and Mr. Will Coxon has been working with the Policy Committee to help us straighten that out. You have a draft in your packet of that, and I think it goes a long way toward addressing what was really a, a process that was not properly structured and organized. So I think that's going to be a big help. Mr. Will Coxon, would you like to talk about that?
The only thing I would add is that the draft also includes some changes to travel, that you might want to look at that to-
Yes.
See if that would help solve some, or address some of the issues you were talking about earlier.
And I, I mentioned earlier, I asked a question earlier regarding this operational policy being developed. If any board member, once you have time to review that, have any questions, talk to Mr. Will Coxon or also Mr. Cloy, and they'll look at, you know, the information that you submit.
I, I think we'd like to try and get that wrapped up and bring it back to the board for the August 10th meeting, so please take a look at it, and if that's a reasonable deadline, Mr. Will Coxon, let's try and get it done, so.
Policy Committee meet you before then?
We haven't set another meeting, but I'll talk to Ms. Kostick, and we'll set something up and try and get that organized, so.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to make one comment. The board committees, and I would imagine a number of them, we would welcome public input or participation. I just know in the past, some of the board committee times have been, you know, kind of right in the middle of the day. I would just encourage any committee chairs to consider, you know, after-hours opportunities if we can, if we, if we truly want robust public participation.
Yeah. The only thing, you know, you can do that whenever possible. Sometimes, you know, you need a staff person there, and it requires, you can't do them all on the same night. We have one staffer. But anyway, that would be up to the board, the co-chairs to determine the time for that. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input. Thank you all for your input. Move for German.
Second.